Good evening, everyone. We're ready to begin this evening's board meeting. Sergeant Arms, has the front lobby been attended to?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief. We request that all electronic devices be turned off or put in silent mode. Also, please refrain from using flash photography, except during the special presentations portion of the meeting. I'm pleased to welcome you to the June 3, 2024, School Board Meeting. The time is 6:00 PM and this meeting is hereby called to order. We'd like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest potential and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. On this evening's agenda, we have the invocation, pledge of allegiance, acknowledgements, recognitions, public comment, consent action items, which include one item under Board Office, one item under Executive Services, three items under Academic Services, five items under Business Services, three items under Human Resources, one of which is a good cause. Whenever you're ready, Dr. Savage, please provide an explanation for this item.
Yes, Chairman. On Wednesday and Thursday of last week, the district teachers overwhelmingly approved the fiscal year 25 Talc Collective Bargaining Agreement with an 85.49% voting in favor of the new agreement. Tonight, I am recommending approval of the agreement and the addition of the item as good cause, so our staff can implement the agreement in anticipation of the new fiscal year on July 1, 2024, and the new school year in August.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. As Presiding Officer, I find there is good cause to add this item to the agenda. Now, we have nine items under operation, including one, which is also a good cause item. Dr. Savage, when you're ready, please provide an explanation for this one item.
Yes, Sir Chairman. The district desires to expedite the rebuild of a school destroyed in the hurricane. Contract negotiations just completed with the vendor, and they were successful. I am bringing this item as good cause to allow work to start right away in order to facilitate the timely opening of the school by the attached timeline.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. As Presiding Officer, I hereby find good cause to add this item to tonight's agenda. We also have two items under Attorney's Recommendation, which are also good cause. Attorney DeBree Bruno, whenever you're ready, please provide an explanation for these two said items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one was added as a good cause because on May 23, 2024, Dr. Christopher Bernier was chosen as the next Superintendent for Duval County School District pending approval of an employment contract. Once Dr. Bernier's contract with Duval County is approved, all financial obligations per the separation agreement shall cease. We anticipate that this will occur within the next week or two and before the board's next meeting of June 26.
Thank you, Attorney DeBree Bruno. As Presiding Officer, I hereby find there is good cause to add this item to the agenda. Could you please address the second item?
Item number two was added as a good cause in response to a formal challenge to the textbook adoption of History Alive: The United States Through Industrialism. A hearing was held as required by law and policy, and the hearing officer issued a recommended order on Tuesday, May 28, for the board's consideration and formal adoption.
Thank you, Attorney DeBree Bruno. I find, as Presiding Officer, there is good cause to add this item to the agenda. After that, we have one item under Public Hearings and four items under Good of the Order of Other Business. That's certainly the longest agenda I've had to read in a while up here. Board members, is there a motion to adopt said agenda? Mr. Persons?
I make a motion, we adopt the agenda as presented.
Okay, second?
I'll second, thank you.
Okay, so, motion moved by Mr. Persons, second by Ms. Juvenelli, please record your vote.
It's not coming up for me either.
Okay, do we need to roll call vote then? Okay. Okay, we're going to proceed to roll call vote, Board Docs isn't coming up, so we'll start with Ms. Juvenelli.
Yes.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Persons?
Yes.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
And I'm hereby an aye. Motion passes 7-0. Okay, moving on, okay. As is the custom of the board, Ms. Jordan will introduce her guest for invocation. The invocation is intended for the benefit of school board members as they proceed with their work this evening, is not directed at the audience. Those who deliver the invocation may reference their religious faith, as you might refer to yours when offering a prayer. We wish to emphasize, however, that members of all religious faiths are welcome, not only in these meetings, but in our community as a whole. Staff and members of the audience are welcome to pray or not pray. After the invocation, Mr. Persons will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand, and Ms. Jordan, please introduce your guest.
Thank you. I would like to welcome Reverend Cologne from the Episcopal Church of God to give the invocation this evening of Fort Myers. Thank you for joining us, and please step forward.
Good evening, and thank you so much for this honor. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather here today for this meeting, we invite the presence of Your Holy Spirit among us. We are gathered with a shared commitment to the education and well-being of the students in this community. Fill us with wisdom, so that our decisions be made with fairness, integrity, and a deep sense of Your love. As we reflect on the school year that has now come to an end, we give thanks for the many accomplishments and milestones achieved by our students, teachers, staff, administrators, and families. We celebrate the growth and learning that have taken place throughout this year. Lord, we ask You grant us the wisdom to learn from this year's experiences and the inspiration to plan for an even brighter future. Lord, we also take a moment to honor those who came before us, laying the foundation for work that we do today. We thank You for their vision, dedication, and perseverance. We pray for those who are with us now, that they may continue to build on the foundation with wisdom, compassion, and unity. And we look ahead to those who will come, asking for Your guidance to leave a legacy of excellence and opportunity for future generations. We ask for Your blessings in this meeting and all the work that we do. In the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit, we pray. Amen. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you. Mr. Persons, when you're ready. You'll draw me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Next on the agenda are acknowledgements. The character word for June is cooperation. Alone, we can do so little; together, we can do so much, by Helen Keller. The design displayed is by Preston Trendisty, an 11th grade student at Estero High School. At this moment, I also want to recognize, we do not have a student representative this evening due to the start of summer break, and we want to wish all of our students a wonderful and most enjoyable summer. At this point, board members, if you want to join me in the pit for recognitions.
Good evening. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Lynn Harrell, Executive Director of Leadership and Professional Development, to the lectern. With great pride, the School District of Lee County acknowledges the 2024 New Teacher of the Year. First-year teachers within the School District of Lee County are enrolled in the accomplished professional practices for the Lee County Education System Apples program and are assigned an Apples mentor for job-embedded support. Each year, the School District of Lee County honors the work and contributions of the first-year teacher by recognizing a new Teacher of the Year. A selection committee is consisting of prior recognition recipients, as well as the school-level and district-level administrative representatives. Reviewed the written tasks and conducted interviews with the finalists to determine the new Teacher of the Year. The recipient was announced during a surprise school visit and is being formally recognized this evening. The school board and the superintendent are very pleased to recognize Robert Jones, reading teacher of Lee High Acres Middle School, as the 2023-24 School District of Lee County's New Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, Mr. Jones.
This is awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good evening again, everyone. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Teresa Bone, Exceptional Student Education Director. Family Initiative's Annual Autism Acceptance Awards recognize and celebrate the everyday champions of the autism spectrum disorder community and their tireless efforts to promote inclusion, education, and empowerment of the autism spectrum disorder community and beyond. Two of this year's four community honorees are educators from the Lee County School District. The Believer Award honors an individual or organization that effectively uses its resources to positively impact individuals and families with autism. The Dylan Award honors an individual who has gone above and beyond for the autism spectrum disorder community and has served as an inspiration to others. This year, the school board and superintendent are pleased to recognize these educators for their unwavering commitment to our students and for being exemplary educators. Mia DePescual, ESE educator from Three Oaks Middle School, as the recipient of the Believer Award. And Carolyn King, speech pathologist educator from Gulf Elementary, as recipient of the Dylan Award.
Please join me in welcoming Mrs. Angela Montemorano, Chief Human Resource Officer, to the lectern. On May 23, 2024, the School District of Lee County conducted its annual longevity staff recognition awards. This event recognizes employees who have dedicated at least 25 years of service to our district. As one of the largest employers in Lee County, we recognize the immense value of a dedicated and dependable employee workforce. The hard work and dedication of our employees play a vital role in shaping the positive learning environment and community within our schools. This long-term commitment of our employees is an inspiration to all and a testament to the supportive and nurturing environment we seek to maintain. The school board and the superintendent are proud to recognize and celebrate the extraordinary dedication and unwavering commitment over the years of the following employees. Robert Maza, 30 years of service. Bonnie Maza, 25 years of service. Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's play the video.
Mr. Chairman, board members, superintendent, and staff, thank you for allowing me to join you virtually today to share some exciting news. Florida School Boards Association, or FSBA, strives to meet the needs of its membership by offering several types of support to its members. The job of board member and superintendent is extremely important. Doing the job correctly is even more important. We know that education is one of the biggest economic drivers for a community, and we need educated workforce in order to enable our community to prosper. You are doing more than just educating your scholars, you're creating a strong future for your scholars as well as your community. With that in mind, we realize one important area of support the Leadership Services team provides is professional development. FSBA offers learning and growth opportunities for new school board members and those members wishing to continue to strengthen their service. Training is available to equip boards with the necessary tools and the ability to focus on student achievement. The FSBA Master Board Program is a governance team training for the school board and superintendent. Its purpose is to strengthen the leadership's team ability to work efficiently, effectively, and collectively as a governance body, while maintaining focus on student achievement and factors contributing to the success of schools. During the past several months, your board members and superintendent have participated in 20 hours of professional development tailored to meet their needs so that they can serve the scholars in your district. The leadership curriculum offers meaningful learning sessions concentrating on student achievement. Some of the skills and knowledges, processes, and concepts offered through the leadership curriculum include supporting student achievement, self-assessment, establishing trust, roles and responsibilities, leadership and communication styles, team development, core beliefs, district culture, and the understanding of the importance of a district's strategic plan. By participating in this professional development, you have sent a message that continual improvement is important. For that, you are to be commended. Now, I am pleased to present the board and superintendent with this plaque, recognizing the time and effort put forth completing the requirements and receiving the distinction of Master Board certification. As a side note, I have thoroughly enjoyed working with each of you. Thank you for deciding to be a leadership team that goes above and beyond what is required of you. Dedication to your scholars will ultimately result in creating ways to improve student outcomes and better serve your scholars. On behalf of the entire leadership development team, congratulations on a job well done.
So, as we do that, we're going to move on to, next on the agenda is public comment. Attorney DeBree Bruno, please address the item of public comment, please.
Thank you and good evening. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. Please provide a public comment card and put it in the basket provided. If you need a public comment card, they are provided by our staff. The rules concerning public comment are posted in the back and will be made from the podium in the front center aisle. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Concerns will be addressed by the superintendent or his staff as necessary, and the chair may comment as deemed appropriate at the conclusion of public comment. The superintendent or board attorney may also comment if deemed appropriate. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on district issues such as duties, responsibilities, decisions, and the general operation of the district. The school board is viewpoint-neutral during public comment. We ask that decorum be kept and respect be shown, which is what is expected when a government agency conducts official business. Therefore, abusive language such as cursing, insults, derogatory language levied against an individual or a class of people are prohibited. Further, personal attacks such as name-calling are prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, booing, or display of temper during public comment is prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order by the board chair or the parliamentarian. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 0169.1 and may be removed from the chambers by the sergeant-at-arms. Per Board Policy 0169.1, the time per speaker is three minutes if there are 20, two minutes if there are 30, and one minute if there are 31 speakers or more. The maximum time allotted for public comment is one hour, 60 speakers. You'll find a countdown on the big screens in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone. I will call you five speakers at a time. Please follow staff's direction when lining up. Mr. Chairman, there are three speakers that wish to address the board this evening, three minutes per speaker.
Thank you, Attorney DeBree Bruno. Please ensure you have completed a public comment card to provide public comment. The card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information to staff or fault. The cards are located with the staff in the hallway. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board but did not fill out a public comment card? Please raise your hand. Okay, I am seeing none. At this point, Attorney DeBree Bruno, please proceed with public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will the following individuals please line up? Robert Daniels, Chrissy Divagili, Jason Kurtz.
Robert Daniels. I was listening to the board briefing meeting earlier, and I was very, very pleased to hear some very open discussion about the budget overrun on the high school that's being remodeled. I hope to someday soon hear a very candid discussion like that on the state of how much of the general fund is being allotted towards teacher pay. When I spoke here last time, I brought with me spreadsheets, brought you guys handouts, went full teacher on it, to show you how there's $40 million, adjusted for inflation, missing off the teacher pay since I started working for you. It's a difference of about 9% of the general fund compared to now and then that is no longer being allocated to the teachers. I went home, I did some more research. I thought, well, health insurance costs have gone crazy. Maybe that could make up the difference. Maybe that's where the $40 million is. When I adjusted for inflation, I found compared to 2008, our health insurance costs are only $200,000 more as of the end of last year. Again, I don't use this year's numbers because the official numbers haven't been released, and I don't want to muddy the waters. I've brought you a widow with five children who has to go and stand in charity lines every weekend. I've brought you new teachers who live like college students in order to pay their bills, their student their student loans, their car loans, and make it to work every day. I've brought you dozens of teachers over the past year, in small numbers at a time, telling you their woes and their stories, in dangers of losing their house, teachers who still have not been paid out from their insurance companies that are living in ruins from the hurricanes still, but still show up to work for their students every day. When I came here to speak last time, there were 660 open teacher positions. Our mission as a school district is impossible to reach without a highly qualified teacher in every classroom. Our mission is impossible to reach without enough support personnel to provide the needs of our special needs students and our ESOL students. You've activated a ESOL division, a new department, because of how big our ESOL needs are. How many teachers do you have out there that have gone through alternative certifications and need that extra support so they know how to scaffold and build lessons to accommodate the now half of their students that might not be native English speakers, the up to 10 kids who might have ESC needs and IEP needs in their classrooms? And every year, you're losing more teachers that were actually trained and have five or plus more years' experience to do that well because of the conditions with the pay. Thank you.
Please, no clapping.
Chrissy Divagili. You know, ironically, the character word for this month is cooperation. I find this funny because cooperative is the furthest thing from most of my dealings with this year, this year with this district. And I have to ask, is it cooperative of the Public Records Department to process payment for requests and then make the request or wait for an undetermined amount of time to fulfill that request? Is it cooperative for that same department to close requests without providing all of the information requested? Is it cooperative for an elementary principal to tell a parent whose child is a victim of bullying to leave the school and go somewhere else rather than fixing the bullying problem? Is it cooperative for a high school principal, football, for a high school principal to allow a football coach and teacher to bully a student without there being any consequence? Is it cooperative of the Curriculum Department to complete only eight of the 15 library book challenges formally lodged in July of last year? Is it cooperative for that same department to make a parent wait nearly 10 months for a means to appeal a formerly challenged library book after having made numerous requests? You know, I said earlier that I found all of this funny, but actually I don't. I'm deeply disappointed in just how far in reverse we seem to have gone in such a short amount of time. It really does feel like we've gone back to 2021. So I guess all I have to say in response to that, and only a few of you will understand this, is game on. We are beyond apologies. It is time for action.
Good evening, Board Members. Dr. Savage, Kathy DePae Bruno, and esteemed guests. My name is Jason Kurtz, and I'm the very proud Principal of Hector Caffrada Junior Elementary School. And I'm just here to thank you for your continued support of our school family. I think the challenges that we have been facing are well-known, and the support of district staff, this Board, and the community really have been overwhelming over the last year and a half, and really just want to be here on behalf of our faculty, our staff, our students, their families, and say thank you very much.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you, Attorney DeBrie Bruno. Dr. Savage or Attorney DeBrie Bruno, is there anything you do wish to address with public comment?
I do not, thank you.
I do not unless the Board Members have any questions they'd like me to address. Not seeing any. Thank you, everyone, again for your comments. It is truly appreciated by this Board as well as the feedback. I also want to thank, I know all of us know the job that Dr. Kurtz has been able to do under these conditions over the last couple of years. Thank you to you and your staff and your resilient students. We appreciate it. Moving on, we're going to go to approval of action items under the Agenda, under Consent Agenda. The documentation for action items listed under Consent is made available to Board Members seven business days prior to the Board meeting. We're expected to review all the material, and we have an opportunity to speak with the Superintendent with any questions we have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or works stopped with the Board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board Members, are there any Agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under the unfinished Business Table Items portion of the Agenda, starting with Member Juveneli?
I have none, thank you.
Member Patrica?
I am pulling J3, please.
Okay. Ms. Jordan?
I have none, thank you.
Mr. Parsons?
I have none.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
I have none.
Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
And I have none, so we have one pull on that. Is there a motion to approve the Agenda's consent action items with the exception of pulled item, was it H? J3. Okay, J3. I have this H3 in here, sorry. Do we have a motion on that? Ms. Jordan?
I move to approve the Agenda as written with the exception of J3.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, move by Ms. Jordan, second by Ms. Langford Fleming. Please record your vote on Board Docs. Is anyone getting?
Yep, got it.
Okay. Aye. Thank you, Ms. Roman. Motion carries 7-0. Dr. Savage, please introduce any administrators in attendance with a new assignment approved under the Consent Agenda.
It would be my pleasure, Chairman. So the first I'd like to announce is Casey Redvansky from Amontisere Elementary, joining the position of Assistant Principal. Could also like to recognize Armando Alejo at Benita Springs Middle Center for the Arts as Assistant Principal. I'd also like to recognize Sarah Cox in Business Services, the Executive Director for Business Services. Dana Christopher, Cypress Lake High School, Assistant Principal. Donald Stifler, Dunbar High School, Assistant Principal. Stephen McGinley, Lemuel Teal Middle, Assistant Principal. And last but not least, Misty Gonzalez, Riverdale High School, Assistant Principal. Chairman, if I may just have a minute just to address our recent appointments. Just as a, as a, I love to see the show of support, and of course, we always bring a posse, and we're talking about Harms Marsh Middle there, so I always have that piece as well. But to all of our leaders, whether you're an Assistant Principal new, taking on this new mantle of responsibility, or in Business Services as our Executive Director, it is a tremendous show of faith of this Board when they give you the opportunity and trust you to lead out in our community, to lead in our schools, to lead in our central office. To remember that at our core, it is our students we serve every single day, and now you have that tremendous responsibility of putting that service to our community, to our students, to our families, to our staff, all the people who depend on you to help them realize their full potential. It is an awesome responsibility, a great privilege, but I will never be able to thank you enough for the sacrifices you are about to engage in and those loved ones who are around you today who will embark and support you as you act in that service. So a major thank you to all of you for the work ahead. You're just getting started. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. Congratulations to everyone. We really appreciate your service to this district, and feel free if you want to go enjoy the rest of your evening away from the Board meeting. So have a good night for those. We'll take a quick, brief pause as the boardroom exits. Okay, at this point, we're going to move on to Unfinished Business Tabled Items. We have one item to address. Dr. Savage, please read your recommendation for the pulled item.
Yes, Chairman. Item J3, the approval of the Fiscal Year '25, Fiscal Year '26, and Fiscal Year '27 Collective Bargain Agreement with the Teachers Association of Lee County. Tell.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. Is there a motion to approve? Ms. Patrica?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jordan. Okay, discussion?
I don't have much to discuss. I sent out an email, y'all are aware. I'm not comfortable discussing what occurs during executive session, so I'm just going to leave it at that.
Anyone else? Mr. Parsons?
I will discuss something. I'm very disappointed in the union. We have been told that new teachers are going to live in like college dorms. Yet we offered them 8% last year, 5% this year, but the union gave them only 3% last year and 1% this year. If they had gotten everything that we had put on the table, a new teacher would be making $55,000 right now. Let me correct that. Forty-nine, forty, $54,999 exactly. I just rounded it up to $55,000. Instead, they're going to be making $50,500. This year, they got a $500 boost in beginning teacher pay. That's all. With disinflation, you know, and last year, they got a 3%. So instead of the 13%, they got basically a total of a little over 4% in the two years. And that puts us at a huge disadvantage of hiring new teachers when every other district is around us is paying more. Simple as that. I know you keep talking decompression, but if you're making more and everybody gets an 8% raise, the people making more get a bigger raise. It does decompress. But the union is not looking out for those beginning teachers, or even first-year teachers that finished the first year. They did not even get the full amount. So I'm just disappointed in them, and for that reason, I cannot support this.
Any other comments, Board? Anything from Dr. Savage?
I would stand ready to answer any questions from the Board Members, but that's all I would offer at this time.
Okay. Ms. Morgan?
So I guess I will ask the Superintendent to reiterate the comment he made this afternoon about additional time. Because that...
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Why are you saying no?
No. I'm happy to take clarification from the Board. I'm happy to reiterate, but I also just would like to, anything else that you'd want to clarify, and based on what I said earlier today, so I'm not redundant without adding new value?
Yeah, I mean, I know, I was on the meeting, I heard what he said, but that wasn't, that wasn't what we discussed in executive session. So regardless of what he said this afternoon, what we said in the executive session was the complete opposite. So that's why I'm, and I told you all in executive session that if we got here and we didn't have additional instructional time, I wasn't, I couldn't support it. So I'm just, I just can't support it. So that's why I shook my head no.
I'm happy to, on that note, just say what I can say, which is I was not a part of your executive session. I'm not aware of, I was not there to listen to exactly what the content. So what I basically came to understand, based on the negotiation strategy, was that there was an attempt on our managerial side to offer up that we would like to make the instructional minutes of the student day a part of the negotiation. That was then directed to those, it was entered into the record and the negotiations, to which the talk in a meeting that was recorded and folks could go back and listen to it if they were so inclined, that when that was offered by the management, that that was an ask to do that. The union response was, in summary, that is, that is a managerial right, clearly, is a managerial right and thusly not something that can be bargained because it is a managerial right. You have the ability unilaterally do it, and as long as it does not exceed a particular aspect of it, which of course, the minutes offering did not, and so you cannot make it a bargained issue, stop making it a bargained issue. If you keep doing it, I'm going to keep repeating this. The very next meeting, when the issue was brought up again, it was done instead through the interest of student learning and that the importance of improving student learning as something that we all have a mutual interest in. The union, to my understanding, again, summarizing, but I would invite anyone who wants the full, to go back and listen, was that they understood and accepted that student learning is a priority for the Teachers Union as well, and so their position was that if we were to entertain enhancing high school student minutes or something to that effect, and we were to increase that day, that two different offerings would be amenable. One would be that if we wanted to increase the teacher lunchtime, that that would be something that we both have a shared mutual interest in, and to be considered, as well as they were open and amenable to if we wanted to extend the teacher day and compensate them for longer teacher workday, then that's something they would. But again, that, those things are bargainable issues, not, their stance was that it does not change, that we have the ability to change that student minutes as long as we do not exceed the amount of time that we're impacting the work conditions and so forth. And so I just give you that specific because that was what was entered in the record there, and when you're in an interest-based process, a party that has that unilateral, unilateral ability to make changes, that is, that is just how that process plays out. So I'm just recapping and summarizing what was done, which I did offer to the Board Members as well, feedback, so there's that awareness. I can't speak to the executive session because I was not present for that, so I don't know if anything beyond what I just stated was stated, if that was contemplated, I can't speak to that. But I can speak to what was done on the record in the unions as well as the information I provided to the Board Members, which was what I just stated. Again, so I'm happy to answer additional questions as anyone would need for the consideration of the item ahead of you today.
Ms. Juveneli?
So if this was, wasn't, was not, does not pass tonight, what does that, does it have to go all the way back to the drawing board? Where, what happens here? That's what I need to know.
Yeah, I mean, to get the full ramifications, I would love to get more, but my understanding is that if it were not to be in place, then essentially, we have not reached an agreement because it has to be ratified by the Board in order for it to be binding to all parties on this side. So that is my understanding. But I could get more information if you were to, if the vote were to fail today, I'd be happy to get more information on what is the ramifications of that, where we presently sit, if the Board were to vote this item down today.
And one other question. What was the, I know that the, they vote on it, the teachers vote on it, what was the percentage? Where, I know it passed, but I don't know what the percentage was. I'm sorry.
Madam, 85.49% through the Chair to the Board. 85.49.
And how many new teachers actually are part of the union and vote of that? Do we know that answer? I know, I'm sorry, that's...
I have to take time to research to get you more of that information.
But something Mr. Parsons brought up made me think, you know, do they even have a voice in the union? You know, so, you know, but do those new teachers have a voice, or is it totally being ran by the union and the reps?
I mean, I can't speak to that advocacy yet. What I can see is the, the union is the bargaining entity that we bargain with to act in the interests of the teachers, how they, they could speak to you about how they manage to receive their piece of, I can't speak to that. They are the formal entity we bargain with.
That's fine, thank you.
Yep.
That's it, Ms. Juveneli? Ms. Jordan?
So, if I may, you said it was management, so does that mean we can, regardless of what's on here, we can add those 15 minutes?
Well, it falls, as long as something doesn't impact the working terms conditions, we, and it falls within our managerial purview, then it is, that is my obligation to be able to make those changes. We so often have to do, as we're doing in the middle schools, a good example. The middle school piece, we have to make that adjustment based on the shift of the seven-period day so that we have sufficient minutes to cover for those pieces. We have to do that. That's just a function of what we have to do. So we have that ability to do it, and we have done it unilaterally many, many times. Again, my understanding is that maybe there was different strategy or thought consideration. I just was not a part of that executive session. I can't say how it was conveyed. All I can say is what our understanding is and what the union's understanding, and recap that information that I can share with you, and that's where we are today. information that I can share with you, and that's where we are today. Please. I'm sorry.
Just, and I hear you keep saying that you were not part of that, but the bargaining, our bargaining team who went to speak for us, they were part of that conversation, regardless if you were or not. So they would know what was being stated. They know the conversation that was being had.
And that's, with respect, that's what's been conveyed to me, is that there was an, there was an attempt to see if the union would be interested in seeing it as a mutual thing, that basically, we both go in together and say, we want to increase the student minutes and so forth, and the union responded in the bargaining session that was recorded, this is a managerial right. It is not a bargainable item. It's not something that we can bargain, because you can do whatever you want to do, because you have that right. And they shared that. They put it on the record specifically, so that we would not keep coming to the table with that mindset. That said, again, it's, I'm just doing my best to recap. It was relayed to me from the bargaining team that this direction, there was an interest in moving this direction, and I, that's not, I tried to recap the best I was. What I, all I'm sharing is, I wasn't there to hear it directly, and so all I'm trying to speak back to you is what I was explained to me. If there's something different in your understanding, you are more than able to clarify, but that's what my understanding was. Pleasure.
Any other comments, discussions, questions? Okay, seeing done, we have a motion on the table, so at this point, we're going to move forward with a roll call vote. We'll start with Ms. Juvenelli.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Persons?
No.
Okay, Ms. Langford Fleming?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
And I'm an aye. Motion carries 4-3. Okay, moving on. Okay, next item would be under P Attorney's Recommendations. If you could read your recommendation, Attorney DeBree Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item P1 is the approval of the correspondence to Dr. Christopher Bernier, providing notice that his salary, health insurance, and retirement benefits will be terminated upon approval of an employment contract per clause 7 of the superintendent's separation agreement dated April 9, 2024.
Thank you, Attorney DeBree Bruno. Is there a motion to adopt the recommendation? Everybody?
I move that we adopt the superintendent's, the attorney's recommendation to approve the correspondence with Dr. Christopher Bernier.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Jordan, motion moved by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Jordan. Do we have any discussion? Okay, seeing done, we're going to move into another roll call vote. We will start with Ms. Juvenelli.
So now we can vote?
What? Oh, okay. My apologies, it was listed as a- Go ahead, and- It's not coming up for me.
Chair Fish, I have to move.
Aye. Yeah, I can't get it to come up. Okay, motion passes 7-0. Moving on to item P2. This would be under, let me make sure, just double-check one thing. Yes. Dr. Savage, if you could read the recommendation.
Actually, I-
That's what I, okay. It's listed incorrectly in here.
So item P2 is the adoption of the recommended order dismissing with prejudice a formal textbook challenge to history alive the U.S. through industrialism.
Okay, thank you, Attorney DeBree Bruno. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Ms. Jordan? Moved by Ms. Patrica, second by Ms. Jordan. Do we have any discussion? Start with Ms. Patrica, followed by Ms. Morgan.
Just how incredibly disappointed I am at the waste of resources that this challenge caused. I don't have monetary figures. I did request those. Instead, I received estimates of staff hours, and I could read those, but, but it's not going to have the same impact as a dollar amount would have. I can, I can say confidently that it's in the thousands of dollars. 30 hours, I'm sorry, 30 minutes by attorney, six hours by paralegal, 35 hours by education staff that works down here at the district, $1,500 in a hearing officer's time. I mean, it's just, the amount of money that was wasted for a no-show challenge is, it's mind-boggling to me. And the other thing I'll say is, you know, in order to, to receive cooperation, you have to be cooperative. And this is not cooperative. Going through a process, making a challenge, and then not showing up, it's just a waste of resources, and our kids and our staff don't deserve that. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
Well, actually, I was going to make the exact same comment. I'm just going to add that the challenge was mounted by Denise Nystrom, who did not show up at the hearing. So 35 hours staff, 21 and 1/2 hours legal, 13 hours hearing officer, court reporter, all those things for a challenge mounted by one individual who did not show up at the hearing. That's sad. That, that's my comment.
Any other Board comments? Ms. Juvenelli, filed by Mr. Persons.
Unfortunately, this is the process, and it's due process, whether we have a cooperation that we can't control. But I think allowing the process to play out, and unfortunately, this is the outcome, so it is what it is. So, I mean, I think we still have, you know, we still have to honor and respect the process, and that's what I will always stand by. Thank you.
Mr. Persons?
Yeah, there's a process, and that process ends with the plaintiff showing up. So Ms. Nystrom was wrong for not showing up, and I don't care how you want to twist it, or whatever. I was disappointed in that, the waste of money.
Any other Board comments? Okay. Okay, at this point, please record your vote. Item passes 7-0. Moving on to public hearings. Dr. Savage, please present your recommendation for this evening's public hearing item.
Yes, Your Chairman. Item Q1, approval of the amendment to the charter school contract with Florida High School for Accelerated Learning. South Lee County Campus Incorporated doing business as Island Park High School for the purpose of the addition of middle school students, grades 7 and 8, for the same terms and conditions as approved by the Board on June 4, 2019. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
Thank you. At this, at this point, we're going to recess the school board meeting and open the public hearing. The time is 6:55 PM. As indicated, the public hearing this evening is to consider Dr. Savage's recommendation, as previously stated. At this time, the public will be invited to speak on this one item. The time allowed for public comment is three minutes. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the Board regarding the approval of the amendment to the charter school contract with Florida High School for Accelerated Learning, South Lee County Campus Incorporated doing business as Island Park High School, and the purpose of the addition of middle school students, grades 7 and 8? Okay, seeing none, I will now close the public hearing and reconvene the school board meeting of June 3, 2024. The time is 6:55 PM. Dr. Savage, please restate your recommendation for this evening's public hearing item.
Yes, Your Chairman. Item Q1, approval of the amendment to the charter school contract with Florida High School for Accelerated Learning, South Lee County Campus Incorporated doing business as Island Park High School for the purpose of the addition of middle school students, grades 7 and 8, for the same terms and conditions as approved by the Board on June 4, 2019. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
You have heard the superintendent's recommendation with the Board to approve the amendment to the charter school contract with Florida High School for Accelerated Learning, South Lee County Campus Incorporated doing business as Island Park High School for the purpose of addition of middle school students, grades 7 and 8, for the same terms and conditions as approved by the Board on June 4, 2019. This approval authorizes superintendent to execute all related documents. Board members, is there a motion to approve? Mr. Persons?
I make a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Persons, seconded by Ms. Langford Fleming. Is there any discussion? Ms. Jordan?
I just wanted to mention on this, it's what I spoke about earlier this afternoon, the increase in the number of students that walked across the stage and now entering, those children in the middle school who may not make it to the high school. I think it's a, it's a great partnership.
Ms. Juvenelli?
And I actually would agree. Anything that we can do to get students across the finish line in graduation, even if it's in 7th and 8th grade, I think that's going to be opportunity, because not every student learns the same, and so this gives an opportunity for them to focus on their academics and get through school. So, and get a diploma. So I'm, I'm excited about this for students in 7th and 8th grade. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, at this moment, with motion on table, we're going to move to please record your vote. Motion carries 7-0. Dr. Savage, Attorney DeBree Bruno, is there anything you wish to address regarding the public hearing?
I do not. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just without being redundant with the Board comment, just, we continue to work to expand these opportunities to support our students and families through very unique circumstances, and the more offerings that we have that are out there that can fit to those unique profiles of how we can meet the learners where they are, and the families where they are, is something we continue. This is just one example, but we continue to look at a lot of unique programs, so just thank the Board for their willingness to consider this as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. At this point, we're going to move on to item R, good of the order and other business. Board member comments, I will start with you, Ms. Juvenelli.
Okay, I'll be quick. I just want to wish all, all the staff, teachers, and paras, anybody working this summer, hopefully, they won't have to work too much, but a safe summer. Those that have the time off, take every minute and relax, and enjoy your summer, and just have a safe summer. And last day, time out for summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
I have none, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
I made most, most of my comments earlier, but I did want to say, I forgot to mention about the gardens, that our gardens had produced from nine schools over 10,000 pounds of produce this year.
Wow.
So that's really exciting. And then next year, we have two more coming on, possibly more schools, and, you know, being able to provide fresh fruits and vegetables for our kids, that's, that's a good thing. So I just wanted to share that, and congratulations to the Coronado for all of them just being passed the charters. Thank you. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Persons?
Yes, as we know, in most of the public, the students are assessed at the beginning of the year, and they're assessed actually three times during the year. And we had a new school this year, Lamille Till, and the students were assessed quite low, just to be honest with you. But, and they had the most new teachers of any school, probably, because they're a brand-new school, and a new principal. I want to give a shout-out, because those students approved their scores more than just about any other school in the district. I think they were third on the list of how well the students did as far as improvement. I mean, I'd be the highest, but from where they started to where they ended, was a tremendous improvement, and I want to thank all the teachers and Principal Rustino for motivating them, and that's just a great first year for that school. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Persons. Ms. Langford Fleming?
Thank you for sharing that, Mr. Persons. I wanted to say thank you, too. I was able to attend an award ceremony where it reminded me, with the gardens, that the volunteer partnership with the district was given to Riverside Church. They're doing a great job at partnering with one of our schools out in the East Zone, and I know that there are several other partnerships happening throughout our community, and they are setting up those students for success and to be able to have a healthy and fun summer by making sure that their pantries at their houses are fully stocked. So I just wanted to say thank you to them, as well as all the other partnerships, like Community Cooperative, that do so much for our students when, and those families when they are on break. I had, and I'll leave you with this, I know that Ms. Patrica is going to be incredibly jealous of the fact that I was asked to umpire the kickball game at Heights Elementary School. It was a fabulous, fabulous way to end the school year, and hats off to the students at Tanglewood for beating the teachers for the first time in the history of Tanglewood Elementary at their kickball tournament. That is all.
Thank you, Ms. Langford Fleming. Ms. Morgan?
Oh my goodness. Well, I wish I could be so jolly. But anyway, I'm going to share with the public information that I shared with you, the MIT Living Wage Calculator. The annual average salary of teachers in Florida is $58,098. The salaries households with one adult and one child, or two adults with two children, must earn to support themselves with no extravagances while working full-time in Florida are $77,515, or $104,524. The state's current position among the 50 states in the District of Columbia for average salary is 50. These numbers pose a troubling equation and paint an inviting picture of the economic lives of many teachers in Florida, where one of the worst rankings for teacher pay is matched by two other depressing numbers. Florida's 48th on spending on students per person, per student, at $12,488, behind Georgia's $14,088. I'm going to, I guess, I think at every meeting, bring this up and reinforce this, what is it? 1% increase in salary in this district is what? $10 million? Something along that line? Let's find that out. But it's, it's not a matter of scraping dollars out of our budget. We're talking big numbers. And the numbers, the numbers that we get are numbers that are given to us by the state of Florida, by the legislature, by the governor. We don't get to choose our operating budget. We don't get to decide on millage. That is decided by the state. I, the only option we have as a district to increase our operating fund is through millage, which is what our neighboring counties do, and are called out regularly for paying higher starting salaries and higher wages than we do. So I think we need to be having serious conversations about what we want to do with respect to our operational budget and our human resources. In a slightly more positive vein, I forgot to mention this afternoon about Mr. Gomez's work on the Legislative Platform Development Plan, which I call a jump shift to a whole nother level of legislative advocacy. And Mr. Daniels, I want to tell you that I'm sure he will be reaching out to you, because he's looking to stakeholders who can share their concerns, not just our concerns, and not just teacher concerns, but family concerns, public concerns, about things that we need to bring to the legislature. And those are the people who are going to make the case at the state level. The state, these people aren't really interested in what we have to say. We come back to them every year, and we say, we have to pay teachers more. Every year, we say, we have to pay teachers more. We need more in the budget. We in every single county in this state say the same thing, but we're the only people talking. Other people need to be talking. Other people need to be having an impact on the people that they're putting in the legislature. So, geez, I got awful serious again when I said I was going to be really good. Anyway, I do want to thank Mr. Gomez, because I do think that we got off to a great start this year, and I am really excited about the prospect of going to the legislature, legislature with a well-defined, meaningful platform for the students and staff in this district. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. I have just a few. I was able to-
I was able to attend the wreath ceremony in remembrance of Captain Daniel Eggers, who died in the services country. He was a graduate of Cape Coral High School. That was about a week ago, I think, I attended. It was a very moving ceremony, and, you know, prayers to his family, as well as thank you to Cape Coral High School for putting that on. I was also able to visit a couple of schools before schools ended. Pine Island Elementary, I was able to get out to Sanibel and Challenger. So, I want to thank the principals, staff, and teachers there for their kindness and being able to show me around and go through a couple of things. So, I was also able to attend the Trafalgar eighth-grade promotion ceremony, and that was, that was really neat to see, so I appreciate it as well.
Outside of that, I do not have any other comments, so I'll be turning it over to Attorney DeBree Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know that the board is aware, but I know that there were stakeholders who also wanted an update, so I'm pleased to announce that I have received my board certification in education law. Board certification is a career milestone in an already milestone year for me, where I am celebrating 25 years in practice. It took about a year, including an in-depth evaluation of experience, extensive peer review, and a mini bar exam. Out of the 100,000-plus attorneys in Florida, only 47 have obtained their designation as a board-certified attorney in education law, and about 15 work for a school district. This designation only strengthens your legal team as we continue to serve you, the school board, and the administration, rendering legal opinions to support your mission, vision, and strategic plan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Congratulations, Attorney DeBree Bruno. The thought of another bar exam is not something I would look forward to. Dr. Savage, please.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Just a few things, just to kind of a nod to my colleague to my right, but also to this board on the left, and the work that you did with our prior superintendent, and just that you as a collective group. While they may seem, you know, getting a distinction from the FSBA and so forth, what it demonstrates, both sides, even though they're different, is an investment to your collective and individual desire to be the best governance team you can be and be the best board attorney, general counsel you can be. And one way to continue to do that is to be constantly reflecting on what you're doing and growing, but also challenging yourself to really have an objective means by which you can say, yes, I'm learning. I am one of only a few who do that extra piece, who are part of that piece. And you as a board who chose, it's a lot easier to be an elected official, not do that, but for all seven of you, be willing to sacrifice the time to also do that. I think it speaks very highly for everyone sitting up here to be a participant in that, and it looks like I've got some work to do, because I'm the only one who doesn't have anything else I can say on that. But that said, I want to shift, just want a big thank you to all of you for doing that. The next thing I just wanted to do was to say, you know, today is a very big day with the board, thank you, with the good cause approving the Hector Caffirata K8 site. I understand sometimes it doesn't, you know, the deal doesn't quite look as good when you're hoping it'll be cheaper and quicker and so forth, but here's the reality. This, no one, you know, we do our capital planning and all those things. We always know it's fluctuating. The market can change. Things can happen. Our economy, as we've seen in our county, we have experienced tremendous changes that really throw the capital plan into flux. Well, when a hurricane hits you, one of the strongest in record for us to have to deal with, that isn't something that we anticipated. It's not something, we know that they can occur, but when it actually comes and descends upon us and creates a havoc, it does. It destroys people's lives, both literally, as well as then creates fallout for our community to suffer. And so, tonight is a momentous occasion for that school. The patience, and Dr. Kreutz is still here today. This is just a tremendous privilege for this board to have prioritized this opportunity, both to rebuild what was lost, but to make it stronger and to also meet needs. It's a strategic utilization of the capacity you have at a cost that is reasonable, and will do it to the standards we know, and a defenseful process that made it through. And I just wanted to applaud you for that work, because it is, it is a challenge, it's a balancing act that you have in front of you. I understand that well, and so, I just wanted to nod to this board as well to make that decision, to support our school, to help our community heal, to serve in that way. So, thank you for that hard decision that you made, and appreciate that very much. The last part that I just want to say, I already mentioned about teachers today being the last day, but I really appreciated when Mr. Persons mentioned about data. You know, I am one of the people who's probably the most obsessed about reviewing and picking apart school data and so forth. And while all that data is aggregated, and we're continuing to clean it up, and there's reconciliation to get the surveys matched and so forth, we will have to wait a long time to get our school grades. It's not going to happen until roughly close to the end of July, based on the state piece. But certainly, the lessons we are learning from our student data of where our students performed, it's so important, and I just so appreciate that the board understands, just looking at that achievement number alone doesn't always tell you where they started and how far they've come, because while we have schools that will be struggling with grade potentially, depending on where those cut scores eventually set, we have so many schools that continue to do that hard work, and sometimes it's even subject areas within those schools. And so, I just appreciate that this governance team understands there are pockets of exceptional things happening in our district, and our job, my job, but our job collectively, is to ensure that we are shining a light on those pockets of excellence, to continue to try to scale them up to a magnitude of change so that all of our schools represent some of the highest-performing, highest-value-add institutions. I would tell you that people out there are working very, very hard. That is not the issue. People are working hard. The conditions are difficult. All those challenges are very real. The work is there. We will continue to get better, and I will say, not just our teachers, but our staff. There will be no shortage of challenges. We see them from everything that you see in our district. You hear about them every day. As board members, you get emails, you get all those aspects. What I can assure to you is, we will continue, as a central office, to really try to shine a light on the things that are working well, transparently, share that real data. We will own the areas of improvement and all the areas in which we are falling short. We will try to give you valid, reliable means to assess, so that it isn't something where you're looking at an unfair measure. You're really looking at the best measures we can give you, so that you, as a governance team, can feel confident in that, but we will never stop improving. The improvement to be better than we were today than this year, that is a never-ending journey that I can assure you, my entire career, it is, it is the expectation, and I can tell you that I've had these conversations with our cabinet. I will say that I've taken the baton, because that, that expectation was there before. It will continue, and then hopefully, as we move forward, it will continue. We have to get better. Our families deserve it. Our students depend on it, and you all expect it. And so, we will not stop trying to improve, but I thank you for at least nodding that those data are in fact out there, and I appreciate it. We'll be bringing more data to give it context and give you more meaningful, hopefully by the very next board meeting, we'll have something like that to share, but it's going to be a while for school grades, but just thank you again for all those things, and I wanted to pull that together. So, thank you very much for the indulgence.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. Next scheduled meetings of the board, on Wednesday, June 26, there'll be a school board briefing at 3:30 PM and a school board action meeting at 6:00 PM. At this point, having no other business to come before this body and seeing no objection, this meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:14 PM. Have a good evening, everyone.